Good evening, I'd like to call to order the meeting of the St. Helena Planning Commission for February 2nd, 2016, and ask Commissioner Sweeney to lead us in the pledge.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Rule call please.
Commissioner Coburnstein?
Here.
Commissioner Sweeney?
Present.
Commissioner Monet?
Here.
Vice Chair Kistner?
Here.
Chairperson Parker?
Present. Moving on to our public forum, this is an opportunity for the public to address the Commission on items of interest to the public that are not listed on tonight's agenda. Because of restrictions imposed by the Brown Act, the Commission may not engage in discussion nor take action on items not described on the agenda. Please observe the time limit of three minutes, Jesse. There's no one in the audience. Moving on to the consent items, we have one, it is the approval of the minutes from our January 19th meeting. Do we have any revisions, or do we have a motion?
I move that we approve the minutes of the January 19th meeting.
Commissioner, Vice Chair Kistner?
Yes.
Commissioner Sweeney?
Yes.
Commissioner Coburnstein?
Yes.
Commissioner Monet?
Yes.
Chairperson Parker?
Yes. Next up, we're moving into our public hearings. Our first item is a description to correct a procedural error from our January 19th, 2016 meeting. We did not open up the public hearing on our discussion on the municipal code sections. Can we have a brief staff report and then open up that public hearing?
Yes, this will be very brief. Items five tonight is the same item that was heard at the January 19th meeting. No changes have been made, and that item was to review the municipal code changes to create consistency within the appeal period. Unfortunately, the public hearing was not opened during that review, and so we just brought it back to correct that procedural error.
Are there any questions of staff at this time?
Is this item five?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah, I have some questions, but our only purpose here is to make that correction. We can't address this, or what? I'm not sure.
I mean, yes, we can, but is it a staff-related question, or can we open up the public hearing and then have a discussion on it?
Oh, yeah, it's, well, I had some questions about what's in here, so should, is that's part of the discussion, or that's not?
That's part of the discussion, I think.
Well, what do you think?
Should open the public hearing.
All right, I'm gonna open up the public hearing. I'm going to close the public hearing, and I'm going to invite Commissioner to discussion.
There's been no changes, so I'm confused what we're discussing, because basically we're just, this is administrative, because we didn't open public forum, right? But we all voted on and agreed and approved.
That's exactly right. It's the same, same item that was heard on the 19th.
But I'm, I, my questions are okay. First of all, you know, the, on, on, I can't ask, can I do this, or we've already, okay. So, under the description of the purpose, under B, number three, they talk about, "The Director shall notify all property owners within 300-foot radius of the subject property within three days of the decision, so that sufficient time remains for an appeal." So, I, first of all, I wondered, I thought, I thought we were going to put in some language of the, the property that residents, as well as the owners, within 300 feet would be notified. And that wasn't in there, so I was just wondering if that could be in there. And then the other thing, you know, it's, I don't understand, they're gonna be notified, how, by mail, by computer, and is it 14 days after the notifications go out? If it's 14 days after they should have reasonably received the notification, or how does that work?
They would be mailed directly to property owners and residents within 300 feet, within three days of the determination being made.
Right, so they would go out in the mail, so they might not get them for a few days, but it's still the 14-day period?
That's correct.
Okay, so they, they might, okay, if they go on through the mail.
They would probably have about nine days, eight or nine days, to file the appeal, worst-case scenario.
How long does it take to file an appeal? I mean, is this a day? If you got it?
Submit the application and pay the fee.
The day before, okay.
Could I jump in? Commissioner Monet, remember, these folks will also have been privy to the public hearing in which the decision was made. This is just a second, and this might be when you're doing events, like if you're making a change, but if the public is paying attention, right?
Well, so I think her main concern is-
This is all public information.
For administrative determination, so when it's a staff-level decision, which, I'll remind you, the code, I think there's three or four places in the code where the staff makes those decisions. However, occasionally, we are required to make a call. What's the front yard, you know, on a confusing parcel where it's hard to define the front yard versus the side yard, those types of things.
Okay. Yeah, that's what I was concerned about, the people. And so it does put them at a bit of a disadvantage, but that doesn't seem to bother anyone besides me. Okay.
Yeah, I recall that we were quite comfortable with it extending just it out to 14 days, because that was really more of the purpose, was to unify all of the appeal processes to 14 days, rather than 14 here, 10 there.
Okay, and then, in a couple of places, you still have 10 days, so I'm just wondering if that's a different standard, or, like, on the paragraph below, there's 10 days still there, and I just wondered. And then on the next page, under section two?
Well, that's 10 days following the conclusion of the hearing, that's when the city council gives its decision. That's not an appeal process, that just the city council has 10 days to give its decision.
Oh, gotcha, okay, I didn't read that right, then, okay. And then I guess, I think it's also on number E, it says, "The City Council shall affirm the Planning Commission's approval of the parcel map." I think you mean shall affirm, or not affirm? I mean, did you really mean to say? That would be cool.
I understand what you're saying. This code section requires city council to approve subdivisions after Planning Commission also votes to support them, so-
I see what you mean.
Basically, the goal is that they have to affirm it for it to be approved.
I got you, okay. It doesn't mean that they're going to do that necessarily, okay, that was just a little misleading. And then I wondered if above there, in the same paragraph, does it have to be agendized as a separate item at the city council meeting? If they're, it looks like they can bring it up, and then, then it says, "If they decide to review the map, they can do so without agendizing that they're going to review it." Why am I reading that wrong? See what I mean?
Well, the statement above says the Planner shall make a written report to the city council, so it will already be on an agenda.
Well, it's, yeah, let's see. But it says at that time, "Any member of the city council shall have the right to call up the parcel map," and is that different than, you know, I mean, is that a different-
It's basically pulling it off the consent agenda for a discussion.
Oh, I see, okay, I didn't understand that, thank you. So they can, of course, they can do that, okay.
Any other questions, Bobby?
Nope, that was it. Thanks. But you'll put in that language about the-
Oh, okay, cool. All right, do we have a motion? Or is there any other discussions?
What are we, are we moving to just accept the previously-
Just a separate vote, or a vote on the same issue because it wasn't conducted at a public hearing? I, I think we should hold another vote, just to kind of a belt and suspenders approach.
Okay. So then I move to accept the amendments to the City of St. Helena Municipal Code, sections 17.08.180, and 16.24.060, and 16.24.100, establishing a uniform 14-day appeal period, with the additional edits brought up by Commissioner Monet, to include residents, as well as owners of the properties in proximity.
Second.
Second.
Commissioner Sweeney?
Yes.
Vice Chair Kistner?
Yes.
Commissioner Coburnstein?
Yes.
Commissioner Monet?
Yes.
Chairperson Parker?
Yes. Moving on to our new business, we have two items. One is a review and discussion of the current design review application and submittal checklist, with the goal of improving plans middles, something that we've been bringing up quite often. If we could have a brief staff report.
Thank you, Chair Parker. Item six is, as mentioned, it's a review of the current design review application and submittal checklist, with the goal of trying to improve submittals. The Planning Commission reviews a significant number of design review and design review exemption applications every year. These projects are very widely in scale and complexity. Similarly, the design review application submittals that we get, and the plansets received, also vary widely, and the Commission has voiced some concerns over, over some of the plansets that have come in and have asked for some additional requirements, or at least a review of the current requirements. So staff chose this time because the, we have relatively light agenda, and it thought it was a good time to fit it in. Right now, we're asking the Commission to inform staff on the level of detail and specific application items that are appropriate for projects of various sizes and complexities. Some potential areas to consider delineating would be based on scale and scope, so projects over certain square footage would require X additional requirements, or potentially residential projects versus commercial projects, those are just some things to consider. The application and the checklist is attached, so please review that. And I would like to add that the state water-efficient landscaping requirements have gone into effect, and the city, and our department specifically, is working to implement those. So, right now, we are creating additional checklist requirements for landscaping plans, so the landscape plans that you're typically, you're used to seeing will become a little bit more in-depth because of the state requirements. That's my presentation.
And do I need to open up the public hearing for this item?
This is not a public hearing.
Okay, all right. Do we have any suggestions for staff? I know that mine, I could just kind of punt, is, one that I had was that certain FAR percentages trigger certain requirements that normal applications might not have, so if it's too close to the maximum FAR, that renderings with pictures from the neighborhood to kind of see what the scale and scope of the project would be, would be a requirement where they're not for other projects. I don't know what that number would be, but just to kind of start the discussion.
And I looked at it the same way, and I was looking at, I was looking at it the same way, but not with FAR specifically, but looking at kind of the breakdown between residential and commercial. If it was over 2,000 square foot, or if it was a change in, to like, 15 or 20% of the existing structure, that that would then trigger the requirements for storyboards and potentially story poles, if there's any neighbor issue. But that for all projects, that we would at least request a parcel map, you've been putting those in, but that wasn't required, that we would ask for confirmation that the neighbor notification had, in fact, happened. But once we started getting to larger, you know, I think along the same lines as that Sarah's bringing up, I was just using it on a square footage basis, that that would then trigger requirements for elevation drawings, you know, 3D, the, kind of, the more significant the project, and then we can just maybe bucket them based on impact.
I'm sorry, getting back to your first point, 2,000 square feet, or 20% of the structure would trigger-
If there was a 20, if the structure, the new structure was 20% larger than what was being demolished, you know, so if, in essence, it was, I was trying to, what's a material change in mass, really?
You're trying to think of, it objectively changes to numbers.
Yeah, if someone is coming in and basically replacing the same house, I mean, these are, every one of these items is a significant cost to the applicant, so if it's a, if it's not a material change, then I think that's less of an issue, I think it's back to exactly, you know, whatever metric we use, but when it becomes bigger.
When it might have an impact on the neighbors above and beyond what is currently there.
And that would trigger renderings?
Yeah, renderings and-
Storyboards, you said.
Yeah. I know we like to see them all the time, but I think for some of these smaller projects, that's, that's asking a lot for something that's-
Yeah, and I will point out, at the planning level, we do not require submittals to be done by a design professional, so there is not a requirement that does get kicked in for building permits, so building permits are required to be drawn by a licensed architect or engineer, most of the time, or at least maybe engineer gets input if there's structural elements, whereas a planning submittal is not required to provide that level currently.
It seems that most of what we get, though, are prepared by architects.
Generally, that's the case.
You know, on the FAR, I don't think, I think that we should look at it slightly differently. I wouldn't want to say when somebody's pushing the max, then we look for data in the neighborhood. I think that anything other than taking down and replacing what you had should sort of trigger a requirement to show what's around, because it could be that the entire neighborhood is built out at 60% FAR, and you're not gonna know that unless you get the data. And, you know, I, I guess I want to renew my request for the applicant or their architect to provide us a plot plan, similar to what we had for the house on Pratt. It doesn't take more than 10 minutes to go to the assessor's website and go through there and list the lot size, and the building square footage, and the garage square footage. Now granted, it might be a little bit off, but it's sort of the best information we have, and, you know, maybe just a certification that they did it. So, then we have that FAR data, and I guess the only time I would say, "Don't do it," is if you're merely tearing down something and putting exactly the same square footage back.
I agree.
Can I ask for clarification on that, because we already require a plot plan. Do you really want to take it to the next, more official assessor's parcel map, right?
Well, the assessor's parcel map comes in the staff report.
But even putting those in, we haven't asked, right?
That's correct, it's not, it's not listed. I would say a plot plan can be, some people don't understand, so they don't understand what a plot plan is, they think of that as, as more of a site plan.
Mm-hmm.
And so, yeah, so, it's currently required, a plot plan is currently required, it says, "Include a sketch of the project site in relation to the surrounding area, the location, names of adjacent and abutting streets." I think just adding to that, including parcel information and structure information within a certain range-
Well, the easiest way to get that, though, is to use the assessor's map, because you have all of the parcel numbers on there. And incidentally, I mean, I notice your site plan and plot plan are the same thing.
I saw that.
You know, you could get rid of plot plan, and you're not, you're not losing anything.
No, one, I've seen them called context maps, or neighborhood context maps.
Yeah, I was gonna say neighborhood plot plan.
That can, can help trigger the, the folks to think about more of it.
Do you have a range, a radius, that you're looking for?
Well, the maps we get, is that, is that keyed into the mailing lists of, like, people within 300 feet, or?
No, the map, the mapbooks that are made by the assessors are, I don't know the rhyme or reason behind them, it's not-
So you just take the page that the house is on?
Exactly, it's the page, that's correct, yeah.
Well, I would say, you know, we should ask, maybe give people a distance, like the 300-foot distance that is, is part of the notification, and say, at least for those parcels that are within 300 feet, they provide that information.
And what's nice is if they do that, then they have to request the APN numbers with the, for, to get the notification addresses, to mail that, so then they'll have the APN numbers to pull the property sizes and the building sizes.
Yeah, well, at what point do you get the APN map? Or do you just put it together the week before, or?
I think it depends on, it depends on the individual project and what issues we're trying to identify through the review, so sometimes we may go pull it early to look at it as part of our analysis, other times we may just pull it to include it in the packet as information.
Yeah, if you pulled it earlier, you could just give it to them, and, you know, they could work, work from there.
One thing maybe, just to consider, would be if, you know, we do a 300-foot radius, and so you may end up getting information from a home that's a block or two away, versus on the same streetscape, so just think about that.
Could be backing up. Are we done with that part?
We can revisit it, but go ahead.
I, I just had something else, but I don't want to leave.
I did too. I would, on anything that's new, I'd like to see a palette, which would include colors, maybe roof material, and I'm not, I don't mean that I want a piece of galvanized metal, I don't, but I would at least like to see what the color is on the, on the roof. And, and I'm saying this because I've seen some really, really, really terrible things, and I'm sure the neighbors don't like some of this stuff. And paint chip and that kind of stuff isn't very expensive, and any halfway decent architect ought to be able to provide that. I could provide it for my house, I, I've got them all, or my mobile home. I also would like to see a full set of blue lines that we could look at, rather than these small 11-by-17s.
Full-size plans?
Yep, because I, you know, I have trouble reading a lot of them, and I think there's a lot of stuff missing from what we see, particularly when we're looking at setbacks and that kind of stuff, I really have trouble. And I can read the newspaper without my glasses, but I can't even read some of those plans with my glasses, so.
Maybe we could have a requirement that setbacks need to be at a different font size, or a different color, if it's, some, some sort of thing where it really calls attention to them with those key setbacks.
And, and I don't think we need a color palette on, on an extension to a house or something, unless they're gonna change. If they're gonna change colors and stuff, and, and, you know, window frames, then I think I'd like to see something on that, but, particularly on a new house, or a new structure, I'd like to see a palette board.
So I'm hearing a color and material board for new structures?
Yeah.
And then full-size sets of plans, or clearly and fully dimensioned-
That's right.
Reductions.
I have trouble reading a lot of that, I don't know if anybody else does, but I-
It's very tiny.
I do, but I hate the idea of having so much paper and so much for every single-
I agree with you, Bobby.
For every single thing.
Yeah, we tend to get, we get a reduced set of plans, and then we get a slightly larger set of plans in our packets.
Sometimes.
With, most of the time, you know, I mean, we could just live with one set of plans.
You're, you're, you're highlighted note here says you're getting four full-size sets already. How expensive is it to do a blue line now? No, I have no idea.
Yeah, I, the only reference I have is when I made copies for a project I did myself at my house, and I'm trying to remember, I think it was about $10 a sheet at Kinko's, and that's just going from memory anecdotally, so-
I'm not even sure we need the, you know, I, I don't care to see the, the elevations, I, I'm looking, I'm basically looking at the, well, a plot plan, really, and with what, what the dimensions are from-
So full-size?
Concerned with, yeah.
Site plan or plot plan?
Yeah, so I'm not saying that we need a full set of blue lines, I'm just, I, I just think where we've got-
You're looking for one big sheet.
Some major dimensions that, that we should be able to read them.
Would that be on any project, or just on new construction?
You mean total new construction?
Well, if you're, if you're gonna use the same footprint you're already in, I don't care.
I meant like an addition.
But if you're, if you're gonna extend something 500, or 500 or 1,000 square feet, then I think I would like to see them.
Yeah.
Well, that's why I really like Commissioner Sweeney's idea of a 20% addition, or whatever number we feel comfortable with, or-
They could go up, which wouldn't be changing the-
That's right, I have no, I have no problem with that.
But I think you would, in certain cases, if suddenly the tall, I mean, I think that, to me, if it's a material change in any kind of volume, or-
Okay.
Or footprint, but, you know, I mean, suddenly someone pops in a three-story house where one story was-
So it's a material change if you're building a new one, right?
Yeah, you know, I mean, I think people would push back on that a little bit. Maybe not, but.
Yeah, I, I do feel we should have setbacks, I mean, we had that case on Spring Street, and it wasn't clear at all how far the house was from the lot line, or how far the new addition was from the lot line.
How far the little, little part of the kitchen that was set out into the driveway?
Right, so it was real hard to understand what could or couldn't be done on that property.
That's hard to see when you're at the property.
Unless you're gonna take a tape measure with you, and then I'm not sure that that's gonna help either.
But does that get back to the whole idea of some threshold that triggers story poles?
That would be a height thing, from my, to my mind, more than a-
I would think that we'd probably only want a story pole if we were talking about, maybe something up in the hills, or, I don't know if you remember the fuss we had over, I think it was Catherine, was it her, her elder resident, and Jerry Hyde and them, where he wanted the story poles to show that if the sun was gonna get it-
The shadow.
Yeah, so, and I, I think that's, I think that's overkill, myself, but-
I think if there's a height issue, that might be, you know, that might impact the neighbors in any way.
We could do something similar, where if it's, the starting height is 15 feet, and if a certain percentage above that, then it would trigger a story pole requirement.
Anything above that, to my mind, anything above the current heights, I, oh, I see, would do a story, well-
Because if it was, what if it's 16 feet, then, then I, you know, but if it's 20-
May I suggest maybe, story poles would maybe be a project-specific situation, and if, if you needed, if the project came before you, and then there was still concern or questions, then that's when that could be requested.
I think so, okay.
Like we did on Spring Circle, Spring, Spring.
Yeah, but, or if there, if it's obviously going to block the view of a neighbor, that, you know, if that's-
There's, there's nothing in our regulations that protect views currently.
The, the case that I was talking about-
Nevertheless, could that be a trigger? I mean, does it, has to be?
If, if there's, if there's no, if there's no factor for you to use to make your decisions based on view protection, then asking for documenting view protection would be not-
I see, even though there's been a history of, of public pushback.
We don't have, there's no protection, your views aren't protected.
I didn't know that, thank you.
I have a question for you, sorry to, Mary, it's, okay. For, under landscape plan, you have a water source call-out, is that, what exactly is that, some of the?
Oh, our regulations are different whether you're using well water or city water, that's why we need to identify that.
Okay. I was thinking, and I, just for pools, to identify where their water source is going to be coming from, I know it won't be city water, but they're gonna have to truck it in, it might be nice if that was somewhat pre-planned, to know that, but I know that's asking a lot. Just concerned about our water.
I had, it's the same, under the mailing list, again, you have all owners of properties, can you add and residents there?
Well, that's, that's currently the legal requirement, so that would be a significant change, so I would want to hear from the entire Commission if that's something that they would suggest, and then we could talk to the attorneys about that.
I do think we need to, I mean, we, we can't ask, I would say that if, if someone is renting a property, that their, their opinion of what happens to a, a neighboring property needs to be taken less into consideration than an owner's. I mean, I think that they, an owner has a vested interest-
Financial interest.
Financial interest in a product, but I mean, I, I don't, and this is not about renters versus owners, but I think in terms of allowing for someone to communicate and have voice around what's gonna be built next to them, the owner, I think, is who we need to reach out to. There is an owner of that property, so if their, you know, if their, their tenant has issues, they can take it up with the owner, and that can be channeled through, but I think our communication and our requirement to the applicant should be to the owner of the parcels in proximity.
Well, I, oh, okay.
Are you speaking about the mailing list requirement?
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, I actually am, I think, in agreement with Commissioner Monet, that I think that we could just do to mail a notification to the mailing address on file for the owner and the physical address of the property, that's within the 300, and then the tenant might get the mail, maybe they don't, because I know it's a little postcard, and that kind of, but that's it. I, I think that it is the owner who I really care about's opinion, because it's, it's their property, but-
I understand that, but the tenant is living there, and I really ca-
Yeah, for how long is that?
I really care-
I just, I know situations-
I don't care, you don't know how long the property owner's gonna own the property either, and the property owner might not even be around. I care just as much about the opinion of the resident who's living there and has to live with the changes, as I do about the property owner. I think they should both, I don't see why it's an either-or. I, I think it's, it's, it's ethical and, and good, good policy to notify everyone who's going to be affected by it, so they have a chance to voice their concerns, that's all. It's, you know, I think it's important to hear from everyone, not just property owners, not just what used to be white male property owners, now it's not just that, but it's, I really, really don't like the idea of just property owners are important. I think the people living there live with the changes, and I think their voice should be heard.
It's not that the folks aren't important, but I think that we have to have a limit to the number of people that can weigh in on, this is an applicant's going, they're going through a process, and if, and undue number of folks can weigh in, I think can slow down the process, and I think the folks-
Well, if what they're gonna do is going to impose on other people's sense of well-being and quality of life, I think those people at least should have a chance to say so. It doesn't mean that they're going to be, have any, you know, that they're gonna make the decisions, but I think they have a right to have a voice, and I think it's important that we give everyone involved a voice, that's, that's nice.
Can I ask how the mailing is done? Does the applicant do it, or do they provide the addresses to you, and you do it?
They have the option, actually, so we either, we either do all of the notifications, or we allow the applicants to create their own mailing labels, because it's, we charge $200 for the mailing label generation, I believe they can get it from a title company I believe they can get it from a title company for less than that. And so some folks choose to have a title company generate the mailing labels. And they provide them. So we still do the notice, but they provide the labels to us.
Is this a certified mail or just regular US mail?
Just US mail.
Is there any reason why, I mean, I've been in a number of communities where there is a notice posted on the property. That doesn't happen here.
It does not, and that's a very common way of doing notification that would address Commissioner Monnet's. Cause if you're living there, you would see the sign go up.
Yeah.
It is something that I would say folks in Santa Elena would not be used to because it's not been done here traditionally. But it's, I, I frankly think that's a, it's a good way to notify people that project's gonna happen on a property, right? And then there's a ten-day period of time. It has to be up minimum ten days before, just like all the other noticing.
Yeah, I mean, I've walked down the sidewalk and seen notices the trees are gonna come down, you know, so.
But do they say that the person has a right to, to be heard and, I mean, does it give instructions?
I think any, I think anybody does.
It's, it's.
Do they say the same thing that the mail-out?
Exactly. It's a standard public hearing notice, whether it's mailed or posted on the sign.
I think it'll be fair, and it, and people are used to seeing that when we're notifying for an alcohol, especially in this community. They're, they're seeing a change in ownership for alcohol production or licensing, so.
Right, but I, I still think that it's less likely for, for all the neighbors to see that posting than it is for them to see it if it's mailed. I, I would, I personally think the mailing is, why not let them have the same thing that the owners are having? If you put it there for the owner and the owner lives in London, they're not going, you know, they're not gonna see it, so.
The problem is finding who the tenant is.
Well, you mail it to the physical address. When you pull the APN list, it has.
You're sort of doing a double mailing. You're, you're mailing to all the owners and then you're mailing to residents. Who might be one in the same thing.
And the owner's on the tax bill, I guess.
I mean, I, I know that our, our, our list that, cause I was looking at it to get my neighbor's address today. And I was like, hey, thank you Erin for giving me this list, and it has the address of the property that's next to me. And it has the owner's address. She lives in Oregon, so I know where I will be mailing my letter to, so.
So if the owner is not occupying, it shows two addresses?
Yeah.
Okay, so then that would be.
Or it has what's on file with the county recorder's office, and we could just do both.
So if there weren't two addresses, you would only mail one to the.
To the physical address, yeah.
Wait a minute, I'm confused. You're saying that the recorder's office gives you a tenant's address plus a?
Well, it's the physical address. That's why it's not the tenant's address. It's the address that actually was, is within the three hundred feet, or in our case, it's the five hundred feet. But then it also says the owner's address. If it's different than the address, that's the physical address.
Yeah, that could just be where the tax bill is sent.
Send it to a resident, is what you would, if you wanted to send it to tenant.
Tenant, yeah. Well, back to ground zero. I mean, I, I think a, a posted sign is nice if, if we can do it for trees. I think we should be able to do it for brand-new houses, but if it's not the, you know, practice and it's gonna really, neighbors aren't gonna wanna see signs in front yards. You know, I, I think the double mailing does the same thing, but.
Not every, not every address, not every parcel is gonna have two addresses because, well, sometimes the owner's actually.
So you only send one to the.
No, on average, how many, how many people, how many residences would you think would, would be within a three hundred-foot radius?
You know, I, I, maybe Jim may be able to provide some more input on, on how many, just an average.
Average, Jim, did that?
It depends, but no more than thirty.
Unless there's an apartment, a building in, in the area.
That's just one address. I mean, it's just one owner.
It's only counted one, one because it's one owner, but there might be.
So right now, it's approximately thirty.
Owners.
It's approximately thirty folks who get a notice per application. The, the point would be that if, if this was expanded, you could go from what would be a thirty mailing to two hundred.
Well, if there are two hundred people that might be affected, then my feeling is they should be notified, but I've already said that, so I don't.
So, so what I was imagining, what I was imagining is, is we can go down the list of each suggestion and kinda take an up or down vote fairly quickly. And then staff can make some revisions and bring it back and then get some, some more input.
All right.
Bobby, did you have any more?
No.
Were there any more?
I didn't have anything more, no.
Okay.
Thank you.
Noah?
So color and material board for new structures?
Just go down the line.
Or even just a show of hands, I think would be fine with me.
Yeah, yes.
I'm neutral, but I'm not against it.
Full-size plans or a site plan, full-size site plan only, there's some distinction there. Or clearly and fully dimensioned reductions. So we could, we could enumerate all of that, or we could require full-sized site plans.
I like the third suggestion.
Which is clearly and fully dimensioned reductions or full-size, the applicant has the choice.
Yeah, I'm, I'm fine with reductions as long as those dimensions are, are clear.
As long as they're readable.
Yeah.
And then we'll call it out on the submittal, and then if it's not readable, then we can let them know that, okay.
And, and site plan will indicate setbacks, cause right now, it says location of structures, but it doesn't specify that you have to.
Yeah, that's what I meant by fully dimensioned, and I can add some language, including all setbacks, structure heights.
Yes.
Yes.
A context map triggered by increased home or structure sizes, so this is showing kinda some of the other structures. I was imagining on the same plane, but it could even be that they back up to or that are across the street.
Yes.
And where are they gonna get that information?
Well, it would have to be based on the assessor information, just like you said, so.
Okay, but you, that, that doesn't show you where the house sits on the property. Isn't that what you're talking about in terms of a context plan? You know, the assessor's map just gives you the parcel number.
RGIS shows approximate locations of structures, so it's not a hundred percent. And a context map could even be an aerial photograph.
Yeah, and don't we get that already? I mean, you usually provide that.
It's, but it's not a listed requirement, so I'm imagining if we, if we spend some time on the site plan and the plot plan, polishing that and then require a context map, that could be an aerial photograph. But then it seems like you wanted some additional hard numbers to be able to document FAR.
Put in these things. Some of the things that we're getting, we're getting because staff is gathering them, and I think what we're trying to do is create a complete checklist.
By the way, your microphone's not on.
The purpose of this is, we're getting these often, but it's because staff's gathering them. And I think ideas, make a complete checklist, put it on the onus on the applicant, and then.
I, I think that, don't wanna give the staff more work, but I think we get a little more uniformity in presentation if we're getting the same kind of information rather than this person prepares it this way and, and somebody else does it a different way.
Well, then we could give them options of, the maps for the context have to be either from the GIS or aerial map from whatever Noah kinda wants to suggest to us when it comes back to us. We, or we can kinda brainstorm and email him maps that would be appropriate. So there's maybe two or three choices that they could pick from, but there's still some level of uniformity.
Well, and, and this note, this note was based on the comments regarding a request for FAR formulas for. I'm, I'm trying to get to how to get that and what the scale would be. So if you did a FAR formula for all homes within three hundred feet, that could be, you know, a, a significant number of properties. I don't know. I haven't, I haven't looked at that.
You know, I remember the little rental we had, a vacation rental on Valley View. The, the lots were smaller. It didn't take me more than twenty minutes to go on the assessor's website, go through all the lots and put that information. What I also like about that particular map is it shows you the parcel boundaries. When you just look at the GIS and you're looking from above, you don't necessarily know where the lot lines are if you don't have the other map to look at alongside it, and.
So could you, could you, just cause I, I'm not familiar exact, could you maybe send me a, an example of, of what you're looking for information-wise? I'm just trying to understand how I would describe it without saying FAR calculations for all homes within three hundred feet.
Like you could provide a map that you want.
I would ask the applicant, I would put the onus on the applicant or their architect to take that parcel map that you generate and go to the assessor's website and then give us the data on the lot size, the building, square footage, the garage square footage. And, and calculate the FAR and certify that they did it from that information.
Sure. So, so, so this is a FAR calculation for all homes within three hundred feet of a property?
I would say so, yes.
Okay. Do we have a, a yes or no vote from the commission?
Using, using the county parcel map.
Right, that's about the best information we happen to have at the moment.
Cause then I'll keep it uniform.
You know, until you, until you get to the point where maybe the city can download it from the assessor. You know, you have to have somebody go collect the information.
Well, it was nowhere ten years ago, so.
Who knows where we'll be in five?
Yeah, I'm okay with that.
The applicant can do it.
The applicant can do it, their, their architect can do it. You just give them the map.
Yeah.
Do we need a lesson on how to read it, or will it be obvious?
Well, the architect should be able to do it considering that they went to architect school or.
Well, this, this will be just like every other FAR calculation you look at at every meeting.
All right. But you.
We're just shifting, Noah won't do it anymore. The applicant will do it.
We'll, we'll do it for the individual property or for the project site, but then.
Right.
So are you, are you, are you talking about a map of all the adjacent?
The map that we get that has all the tax parcel numbers on it.
And it says like.
If you have that map in hand, you can go to the assessor's website and you type in the parcel number. And up comes a sheet with all kinds of information, you know, when the structure was built and. But I think the main things we wanna know are the lot size. It'll give you the building square footage, and if there's a garage, it'll give you the garage square footage.
It's the parcel report, and, and you can type, link to that from our GIS system. Unfortunately, our GIS is not public-facing yet, but we are working on that.
And we'll have that information on, on all the properties surrounding within, is that what you're saying?
I think when we have a new, new construction or we have an addition that is doing more than replacing what was there. We have some people knock something down and just, you know, put the same square footage back.
My personal opinion is that will help with what we decide we're gonna do with the FAR eventually.
I think it, I think it will.
It'll be the building blocks.
I think it'll be a big help.
And you want that for new construction and, and any addition?
You know, it may sound like a lot, but.
I think so.
I think so. Because you, if you don't know what the neighborhood is like, you might say, oh, that's just a, you know, that's just a fifteen by twenty-foot thing. What's the big deal? But it might be, it might make that structure totally out of character with what's right around it.
And I do think asking them to figure out if it's within twenty percent or fifteen percent is just asking them to do a little bit too much, too much math.
Well, I was just saying, we do get a relatively fair number of applications for a one-bedroom addition or maybe enclosing a porch or something like that. Square footage isn't significant, and maybe you wouldn't even notice it from any vantage point other than, than being in the yard, the rear yard. So I don't know if we wanna say visible, or if you're saying for any.
Most additions are to the back, and you could always say, oh, nobody sees it, you know, but.
Well, I hear that every day.
Yeah.
Do you wanna have, do you wanna list an exemption, like a cer, if you're under a certain square footage, you don't have to? If, if, with, with the addition.
I mean, just, okay, so I'm just imagining the, the person who's doing the twenty-square-foot addition for whatever reason as part of a, as a part of a interior remodel and then requiring that. So I just, if I had a percentage or a square footage, I think it would be a lot.
I think it depends on the house. You can have a small house sitting on a very small lot. And a twenty-by-twenty addition can be a big thing.
That's exactly right.
You know, and if you don't know the size of lots and the size of the lots in the neighborhood, it's very hard to.
And that's where my whole, a cer, a certain number under FAR.
I was gonna say, so maybe, maybe the, if the concern is that the, the design of the project is maximizing, is pushing the scale. So you start getting into conversation of scale, maybe it's if you're within a certain percentage of maximum FAR, then you provide this.
You know, I, I still don't like that idea because people are objecting to maximum FAR. And, you know, we're looking for a way to deal with it. And I think one way is to start to understand exactly what the context of the neighborhood is. So I mean, we might decide, okay, this is more information than we need. But I don't know how you say, well, you know, ten percent, we don't need the information. It's really gonna depend on the lot sizes in the neighborhood and the sizes of the houses, and that varies.
Does it seem onerous to you?
Three hundred feet is, is, could that be too vast? Could it say that we need to see the, you know, just go proximity that we wanna see all the?
I mean, I think it does have the potential to be, you know.
Too much.
Yeah.
Or, or just, you know, if, if a house is a block and a half away, not visible from this property that, that you're reviewing. Does the, that calculation affect your decision much? But I mean, it's, it's gonna be purely case by case.
If we said all, you know, all contiguous lots.
Yeah, that I think would be much.
That's very clear. Here's my box.
Exactly.
Anything that touches, I wanna see that. Because, you know, you, you start going a little exponentially out, and I think it becomes less relevant and it becomes more paperwork. And I don't even know if I would take it into consideration, and so, you know, if a house.
It'd be very discouraging that, it'd be like, I wouldn't wanna do that.
But I think the house next door, you know, I think back to Bobby's point about who's effect, who's affected, those people are affected.
I'd like to see.
Hard to see what neighborhoods are, I mean, so I think we all have different definitions of when does one neighborhood start. But I mean, you know which houses touch your property line. There, there's no, that's not ambiguous.
I'd like to see the house across the street and three houses in each direction. I think that that might give a nice.
But behind, I, I'm, is it on, I mean, I didn't, it sounds like you, you're feeling that it's too much. So I'm curious, what, what is your problem?
So there's a couple of things. The parcel reports from the assessor don't always include the information. So, but they do often, but not always, for lot size or structure size, and sometimes one or the other is missing. So then, you know, would they be penalized if they couldn't get it, or, you know, then where do you draw that line? And then I just personally have never done that, that calculation for properties that you don't have control over. And so I, I just, I, I'm not coming from an informed enough perspective to know whether it is onerous or not. But I just, I, I have no problem if the commission wants to require it. I just think it should be done in a way to try to anticipate the unintended consequences.
I think three hundred feet is not asking too much. When you, people come here and they talk about my block, you know, my neighborhood. And that's not just the immediate neighbor.
Particularly if it, if it's a cul-de-sac or something, it goes around.
Or in, in the west, on the west side, you know, there are things happening there. And you might not be right next door, but it, it, you know, if this person builds a big thing and then three houses down, somebody else does, you're gradually changing the character of the neighborhood. And I think it, you know, I mean, I'll volunteer to continue to do it if people think this is too much to have the applicant do. But I, I, to me, it's important information.
I mean, I, I mean, I agree with you. I think it's important information. My only kind of, my only real concern is for the person who is doing a one-bedroom and they're under two thousand square feet, they're way under the maximum FAR, and we're gonna really, and it's, it's not gonna be that triggering a whole design, neighborhood change. I don't wanna have to have them do that. It's, it's not gonna be, that's not gonna be helpful to my decision to say, yes, you're on the consent calendar to add on a ba, a bathroom, a bedroom. That, that's the concern that I have, and I, I just.
I share that concern too. On the other hand, I think you have to have objective criteria. You can't.
And that's, that's the balance, is where do you?
I'm thinking, what if we tried this for a year or so, or for a while and see if it is? Because I, I respect Commissioner Coberson's testimony that it isn't, it isn't onerous. That's what I'm hearing you say. And I, and I'm hearing you say you don't know. So I'm thinking, you know, why don't we see how it goes and revisit at some, you know, in, in six months or something like that? I don't know.
Can I ask you a question that that kinda triggered when you mentioned the consent calendar? So items that would typically be on the consent calendar, we're, we're in essence, if we make this two-hundred, we're pushing all of them off the consent calendar, right? We're moving this right into discussion.
Uh, no, it's just you're asking for this information for something that wouldn't even be discussed at our hearing.
Yeah.
No, it could be if we decide to pull.
Yeah, but it's, it could, it could definitely be discussed, but it's not automatically discussed.
But that might be the reasonable. I, I'd be, I'd be in favor of trying it, let's say, for a, a period of time. I don't know, six months, and see how, see.
I, I will say, this, this is, this checklist is for design review, so this does not, we have a different checklist for design review exemptions. So maybe that's the way to characterize it is, is if it's a design review exemption, this doesn't apply. If it's a design review, it does.
I agree with that.
Yeah, that's good. That limits a little bit of it.
And exactly what would that cover?
What does that mean?
That is, that's just like changing colors and things like that?
No, some, some additions are, are covered under design review exemption, so let me get you. And it's, it's at our discretion to some extent, so let me get you the code language. I mean, the, the, we, we do still prepare a staff report, as you know. But it's, it's just basically determined by the planner to be inconsequential or.
Okay. I mean, I can recall, we've had some. Yeah.
It's design review, not design review exemptions. But I wanted to make that distinction because a twenty-square-foot to the, a twenty-square-foot addition to the rear of the home would be often considered a design review exemption.
And that's not twenty by twenty. That's way smaller, a twenty-square-foot addition. Is what?
Spare with me for one minute.
But the things we get that are on the consent agenda, we basically get the same level of detail for all of them as we do for things that are not on the consent agenda.
You, the staff report is essentially the same. The checklist of the submittal materials is a little bit lighter. But so exemptions. Whenever the city planner finds that a proposal raises no substantial design problem of the sort outlined in the sections above, which is essentially the findings. The planner shall place such an exemption recommendation on the planning commission's consent agenda. The planning commission may delegate to the city planner responsibility for review and recommendation for applications for zoning and building permits in those cases where the opinion in the commission, wherein the opinion of the commission, the proposed use or structure would not have a significant impact on neighboring properties or in the entire area. Or in cases where the proposed use or structure is clearly consistent with the purposes of section, again, the findings and the, and the requirements.
I think the challenge is you can't, if they're going through the process and this is something that's significant of importance to the commissioners and it gets pulled, then we would have to flip it off the agenda and come back. And so either they do or they don't.
And it says the surrounding area.
But then we have Mary.
I would say, I'd rather do it to begin with and then I have to come back.
Yeah, exactly. So I don't think you can differentiate on that. Yeah, exactly, so I don't think you can differentiate on that, um, you know, I, I'm neutral, I think that, I, I like the idea of it, I think that it can get onerous, and I think having too many.
Yeah, I, I'm completely open to, to asking it, I just, we do hear, I, I would say, you know, St. Helena is one of the, is a little bit unique in the amount of discretionary review is required, just in general, um, it's, it's common and consistent with other Northern California affluent communities, but it's, uh, for example, design review exemption for, or a design review for a single family home is not a common thing in, in many communities, um, so we hear from, from applicants or who are somewhat concerned, a lot of communities also have design guidelines and those types of things to help, to help address design, but I, I have no concern over, over the requirement and, and just indicating that that was requested by the commission, and that's something that's going to be required.
I mean, we could go to thousands of them and have to put a tile roof in, in the same color on the outside, stuck on the outside of every single house in the city.
So why don't you take a vote?
All right, so let's kind of pull it back, and what are we voting yes or no to in regards to?
So, so what I.
The FAR number reports from the parcel map.
So what I have is, uh, require a FAR calculation to be provided for all properties within three hundred feet of the project site for any new construction or an addition of any size.
And are you going to provide the parcel map with the designation around what exactly, which parcels exactly they need to do their calculations on?
We don't, we don't do that now, um.
Doesn't this relate to the mailing list, though? I mean, I assume if you go to the title company and you get a three hundred foot mailing list, it's identified by, by, uh.
By a map?
By, um, parcel number, I mean, that's usually how they do a search.
It is, that's, that's correct.
So it would be whatever's on your mailing list.
You gotta do it.
Is, is what.
That's correct.
Okay, I can go for that, what you said, I'm okay with that. And Grace?
Other commissioners?
Yeah, I think it's important, and I think it's going to be helpful to the FAR discussion that's coming in the future.
Okay.
Commissioner Coberson, Sweeney?
Yeah.
Okay.
So I have a two thousand square foot or twenty percent increase, um, of structure square footage, triggers color renderings and storyboard.
We crossed off storyboard saying that that.
No, story pools got crossed off, storyboard is the.
Oh, yeah, sorry, story pools, thank you.
Color renderings, we already talked about, we're going to get a material.
I think there shouldn't be a threshold, I think it's bad, if, if we're going to have people doing all this project, it sounds to me like if they don't replace what they're building, they need to supply.
Color renderings for every project?
The, the renderings, yeah, or the, I mean, drawings, doesn't have to be.
So we already require elevations, so that's a drawing of the, of the facade.
Which I think is important.
Yeah, that's, I mean, you, you can't understand the project to that, yeah, you can't, but, but a rendering is, is more the three dimensional.
Oh, yeah, no, I'm sorry, no, not rendering.
Yeah.
Oh, I like that. Oh, they're expensive, okay.
They can be up to six hundred dollars.
Ooh, okay, no, that's not good.
I mean, if we're going to do away with the threshold, which sounded like we were, like people weren't comfortable with having, deciding what that threshold is, so if there's no threshold, it's either you are, you aren't replacing the property, then. I would recommend we look at this list and say, okay, what do you want, minimize it down to that, and we get away from the threshold.
Man, I, I'd rather have somebody come to the hearing and actually describe their project than give us a lot of paper, and, um, so I don't put a lot of, you know, a color rendering is, it is an expensive thing, I'd rather have someone come here with their material samples, and if we have an elevation, I can say, okay, I, I, I see what you're, what you're, where you're going.
Yeah, I agree, no renderings, if you've got the other.
Okay.
But I do.
Particularly for residential, you might change your mind, have a commercial project.
Microphone. Your microphone.
Okay, so I'm hearing no to renderings, currently, we may, uh, request them for commercial projects, but we'll kind of see. I mean, frankly, I, I think most of the commercial projects that, that we get, that are designed, are, are going to provide a rendering.
I mean, definitely don't in here say you don't need to do color renderings, because we do get those with projects, because they, 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 yeah, they choose to do them, but.
So this, this checklist is utilized to allow you to submit to us, so if you don't have a complete application, we do not take it.
Right.
So you can, you can bring whatever you want in addition.
Hey, yeah, I, I love, I love the color renderings.
You could bring whatever you want in addition, you just don't subtract from it.
Exactly.
Don't throw the bricks out of.
All right, anything else on the list now?
The last thing I have is requiring a parcel map to be submitted and.
And that's kind of goes without saying, because of.
No, the last thing was the notification?
I mean, the parcel map, they have to now.
Yeah, because of the.
We didn't vote on the assessors.
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah, and then, yeah, so, and then, uh, I'm thinking Commissioner Ronette, tenant and owner notification, um, of three hundred feet, or three to five hundred feet depending on the requirements, so can we get a yes or no vote on that?
That's the dual mailing.
Yeah, this will be to, uh, resident and owner of record.
Only when they're not the same as determined by what you were talking about, so that there wouldn't be duplicates to places where it wasn't, um, necessary.
Okay, yeah, I'm.
Occasionally, people may get two mailings, I mean, we, I can't promise that will happen.
Yeah, okay.
Yes, I'd like that.
I'm, I'm in favor of that.
Other commissioners?
That's fine.
Yeah, I'm, I'm fine with it.
Okay.
Perfect.
I'm fine either way with that one.
All right, perfect, moving on, I, to our number seven, our approval of our bylaw envisions from our January nineteenth meeting.
So, um, staff previously brought the bylaws, we've had, I think this is the third, third time we've discussed them, um, we've, we've added some language, and the last direction staff received was to add a definition of ex parte communication, uh, which currently says, ex parte communication is hereby defined as any additional factual information obtained by commissioners that pertains to an individual decision, including visiting a project site, meeting a project applicant, with a project applicant and or meeting with interested citizens. Commissioner Coberson requested that staff provide some additional language, or at least review it with the, uh, city attorneys with regards to the definite, definition and scope of ex parte, um, uh, staff did consult with the city attorney, and, and the city attorney in response provided summaries of, of what other cities provide in their bylaws, which is attached. Uh, the city of Tascadero, uh, seems to have some of the most, um, specific information, um, but others is, is just basically, I think the onus is put onto the commissioners to, to define, or I'm sorry, to disclose additional information that they received. The, the listing of site visits, meetings is, is just one example of what could be provided, but it's essentially, ex parte communication is anything that is relating to the decision that's not in the information packet. So if you received an email, uh, that's in the commission packet, it must forward it to staff as well, we put that in the packet, so that's not anything ex parte, uh, but meeting with them, even if nothing new is disclosed, can't be put into the packet, uh, whether it's a, you know, a neighboring resident or developer, and visiting the site, the fact that you went there can't be enumerated into the packet, so that's why staff chose to identify those two things, um, similarly, the city attorney said it's, it's no problem to add additional information to that definition, uh, and he's also willing to consult with individual commissioners if you have any more questions before, uh, maybe we make any changes.
I just think it should be more than I talked to the applicant, I, I think it has to be a disclosure of the substance of what you talked about, so that somebody who opposes it or anybody else has the information.
And, and interestingly, uh, if, if, uh, a, a opponent of a project asks commissioners to elaborate on their meeting, that, that is something that should be done, that was, that was disclosed or, or directed by the city attorney, so. If you said, I met with the applicant, I didn't learn anything new, and then someone said, well, what did you exactly talk about? You would be expected to, to describe those conversations, and conversely, if you met with neighboring, concerned neighboring citizens. So we can add additional information if needed, or, uh, we can leave it as it currently sits, it does have a definition, um, but those examples are relatively generic.
I think it's fine, because it does say, in your little asterisk down below, it says additional factual information obtained, so.
It's not just saying, I met with them, it's what is the factual information?
And then, a- as an example, uh, you know, a commissioner could say, I met with the applicant, and we discussed the project as it's described in the staff report, and, and that would be sufficient unless questioned, and then you would just elaborate. Okay, well, thank you very much, and then these, uh, need to be adopted by the city council, um, so they will go to the council, and then they will be formally adopted.
Do we need a motion on that?
All right, do we need to have a, okay, can we have a motion on, uh, approval of these?
I move that we approve the, uh, St. Helena Planning Commission bylaws, and that we for- forward them on to the city council.
Second, second.
Commissioner, Vice Chair Kistner?
Yes.
Commissioner Monet?
Yes.
Commissioner Coberson?
Yes.
Commissioner Sweeney?
Yes.
Chair Person Parker?
Yes.
Moving on to our department report, Noah?
Um, so generally, we're seeing a lot of development activity in town, a lot of interest in the community, I just wanted to let you know, we will be modifying the agenda to include some of the, uh, things that are in the bylaws currently, so that includes ex parte communication, that includes agenda forecasting, which I know used to be, uh, a part of the agenda, and we removed it, so staff will be putting that back. Staff keeps kind of a running tally of, of projects, projects in the queue, as well as kind of items of interest, and those, that will be provided to the commissioners as a part of the, um, agenda forecasting, just so you can see, frankly, the sheer volume of, of issues that we're trying to address, uh, and then also, that will be an opportunity for commissioners to raise individual issues or questions that they have at that time, uh, and then staff will just ask the whole commission to, uh, voice whether they would like that item to be added to the list, um, of course, we couldn't discuss it at that time, it would just be, we'd like to have a discussion on, and that would be added to the, uh, the, uh, agenda forecast summary. However, you know, the timing of that would be relative to how much staff time it's going to take and what our previous commitments are, and, and you'll see some of those in, uh, the agenda forecast. I, I just want to also talk about kind of forecasting the agenda, uh, staff will be bringing back the short term rental revisions to the planning commission for review, so, uh, as you're well aware, we had quite a process to get to some direction on short term rental revision, so staff is expecting those to come back in March to the planning commission and then, uh, on to the city council afterwards. And then also, staff has begun working on implementation of some of the housing element commitments that were made with our two thousand fifteen housing element, which was approved by the state, uh, one of the things that we've committed to doing is, is removing the use permit requirement for multifamily properties on certain housing opportunity sites here in town, so there will be no more use permit required, so those uses will be allowed by right on those sites, um, staff committed to doing that, and so we will be making those changes. Uh, and that's the gist of the department report, if you have any.
Any questions?
Questions, staff?
Well, thank you very much.
I'm given, you know, I mean, do you have any sense of when, um, the, um, the agenda forecast will be on the agenda?
Probably the next meeting.
Oh, okay, cool, all right.
If not the next, it'll be the one after.
With that?
And, and then I have one more thing, uh, so we, we took the, um, the FAR exemptions to the city council, uh, last meeting of January twenty sixth, um, as you recall, there was a proposal to remove the two hundred square foot garage, uh, exemption from the FAR, and to remove the exemption for covered porches, the council denied those, so they actually want those to stay, but I, I, maybe I shouldn't characterize it, they want them to stay, they want staff, they directed staff to bring back a comprehensive analysis of FAR in general, and look at other ways to address it, so they wanted more of a comprehensive, uh, review of FAR in total, and so staff will be conducting that, bringing that back before the commission, um, and so that may dovetail well with, with some projects that are doing this three hundred foot analysis, and we can kind of bring that into the discussion, or at least it'll influence that discussion, and that will probably be happening, I would imagine probably April, given where we're at now, but just to let you know that.
And that doesn't come to the planning commission before it goes to the council?
Well, it definitely comes to the planning commission before it goes to the city council.
Oh, it does, okay, so we'll be seeing it.
Any questions? Okay, and with that, this meeting is adjourned, thank you very much.